I'd like to welcome everyone to the October 2nd ZBZ zoning board of adjustment meeting. It is 1:33 and I'm going to establish that a quorum is present and there is, I believe, we have a full quorum, we have a quorum. And that was item number one, that was quick. Don't y'all wish that all your items are going to be that quick? All right, item number two, review and take any action related to minute records of the regular meeting held on Monday, September the 16th, 2023. Y'all look, minute's over.
Make a motion to approve.
Well, actually, I think what she was saying is that we need to make a change based on the amount of people that were here voting.
Oh, okay. For Sherri.
Yes, we started off missing one, we picked up but did not pick up the total number, so we need to change the voting number and we will do that. And one of the vote is off and we know which one that is and we can make that change also.
So I guess we vote against the minutes then?
Table them and bring them back with those changes.
Table the minutes.
Unless anybody has any other changes?
Make a motion to table the minutes?
I'll second it.
Before you vote, if they're simple changes, you could approve with those changes unless you want to actually see them before you vote.
See them.
What does the board want to do?
I want to see them.
Want to see them? Okay, we have a motion to table and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, there are no opposed. Item number three, ZBA 23-22, 1809 Cordell Drive, single member district, number two, Tom Thompson, request for variance from section 501 of zoning ordinance to allow for a five foot yard setback rather than the required 25 feet within the single family resident, RS1 zoning district in Angelo Heights neighborhood. And Ms. Ray's going to give the presentation. Hello, Ms. Ray.
Good afternoon, Ray Limeberry Planner. So this is 1809 Cordell Drive, District Two, Tom Thompson, in the Angelo Heights and it is RS1. They are requesting a variance of five foot in the front yard setback instead of the 25 foot that's required for a carport. We did mail out 23 notifications. I know that says three, but I have received three more in favor, so it's a total of six in favor. One of them did write some notes that that they are very happy with the addition, that it looks great and it does not block any type of viewing, that they have noticed any issues. So the carport has already been constructed. They received a notice of violation because they didn't have a building permit to do it. So these are pictures, this is how it looks currently. And if you want to look at the survey or the site plan, and I wanted to mention here that...
You mentioned the site plan there.
Yep, absolutely. So...
The house is setback further already, the original structure beyond the 25 foot building line there, it looks like?
Correct.
How much?
But only by, I want to say it was like two feet.
Ah, I don't know what scale that is, but okay. So you said the house is setback 27 feet instead of the required 25?
Correct.
Okay, go ahead, thank you.
Oops, wrong way. And the purple is the open structures overlay where normally a person would be allowed to have a carport up to five feet from the property line. They are just 459 feet north of where the overlay stops. But the applicant did, there are quite a few neighbors around that have a very similar carport and so that is what they were going for. City staff doesn't believe that there is any special circumstances to allow this variance. If the variance is granted, the use of the land would be contrary to public interest because the setback standards were adopted by city council, that's what they, they were intended to have the 25 foot setback. So staff believes that granting the variance will disrupt the pattern of development in this area as most of the homes in the area do not have a carport, but there are a few. So staff is recommending denial of this and since it's not in the open structure overlay, they are required to keep the 25 feet setback.
Go back to the last thing. First, no, one more back. Who says the applicant hired the contractor?
Correct.
We run into this quite a bit. How much responsibility would be on the contractor to make sure the applicant was doing the right thing? Is he a registered contractor in St. Angela? Do we know who the contractor is? I just hate the word contractor being thrown there with a bunch of ignorance.
We do know who the contractor is. A name was given to the building official.
Yeah, afterwards?
Correct.
Okay, all right, go on. Thank you.
So staff is recommending denial. Is there any more questions for me?
Of course.
Figured there would be.
So you did say there's other carports in the area that are classified?
There are. You're about to see one next.
Okay, thank you.
Ray, can you talk about whether those other ones are legally permitted or not as well?
There are two that we do show got a variance. I'm going to go back a little bit here to a map, not that map. Oh, none of the maps I guess show, okay. So there are two over here that's not on the map that did receive approval on a variance to get their carport.
Did?
They did. It was in 97 and 94 that they got the variance. There are others in the area that did not receive a permit and will probably be coming to you in the future. We received a list of others. So there are others, but not.
How many others?
I believe there was 12 on the list.
There's 12 of them?
I believe there was 12 on the list we were given.
Would staff have approved it if they would have gotten the permit or would that have gone through us?
It would have came here because they're not in the overlay. If they were in the open overlay, they would not.
Would y'all recommend approval? Would y'all recommend approval? No?
Probably not.
Well, risk and reward, right?
Has the contractor been counselled about the need for permits?
I cannot answer that question.
Does the contractor hear?
I'm not sure.
When those go to the building official, they are typically contacted and let them know they did work without permits and that they need to come in for permits. And that's usually how we, that's usually how we learn of these is that...
Who caught this one? Code enforcement?
I'm not sure.
This one in particular, I believe a neighbor called and said that they believed this was incorrect because I think they came up and tried to get a permit and was told no, that they would have to come here to get a variance and everything and realized that this neighbor did not do any of that and so called and code went out.
And the plot thickens.
Multiple times.
All right, any more questions for Ray? Thank you, Ray. All right, I'll ask for public comment. Is the applicant here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, step up, please. State your name for the record.
Delia Castillo.
Okay, Delia, how are you today?
I'm doing okay.
Yeah, just relax and take it easy. This is harmless, we don't bite too hard.
Okay, well, I have a one-page statement I want to read to you guys and I made copies of what I'm about to share.
Sure. Pass it around to them.
And I have the original, I went through a door to go in about 20 signatures of approval.
Okay, great.
This is just the copy, but I guess I'll give you the original.
While you're passing that out, go ahead and tell your story on what happened here.
Okay, so like I said, I am Delia Castillo. I live at 1809 Cordell Drive in RS1 zone. First, thank you all for hearing me out today. I am here requesting that you please grant us relief from the hardship my husband and I found ourselves in before building the carport. My husband is not here with me because his presence would certainly make me more emotional and it's imperative that you hear what I have to say.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to explain how we got here, but first, may I ask how many of you have garages or carports? Is that an okay question to ask?
Sure. I have a garage.
I figured most of you guys would and I'm hoping that you can relate to me nonetheless. So I did not intentionally violate the ordinance. For years, my husband of 15 years yearned for a carport. To be honest, I gently shrugged it off because I imagined it would be an expensive eyesore. However, as a social worker, I noticed how his mental health began deteriorating. At the mention of rain, he would begin to experience headaches, nausea, shortness of breath and stomach pain, and if it was late, he'd lose sleep over it. He'd worry if we'd have even more insurance claims. We had four hail claims in two weeks once. He worried about the 100-plus degrees continuing to eat away at our vehicles' paint jobs, interiors and tires. He stressed over if I, one of our mothers, might fall in the rain or ice as we try to get to and from our vehicles. His suffering only increased when we were finally able to buy him his first brand-new vehicle GMC, the truck of his dreams. At about the same time, I drove by a neighbor who was getting a carport built and I stopped to talk to the builder. He quoted me an unbelievable price, told me that a permit wasn't needed and being a first-generation homeowner, I thought I was free to do whatever I wanted as long as it did not infringe on others. So I used every bit of our savings and had it built over a weekend as a surprise for my husband's birthday, which happens to be this Thursday. Unfortunately, the notice of violation was not a welcome surprise. As I stood under the carport last weekend, a feeling of peacefulness came over me. It was then that I realized you cannot put stipulations on peace of mind and I beg you not to. Please do not be punitive. You might think his symptoms are ridiculous and not a valid hardship, but if you knew what it's like to grow up with nothing and how hard he works for the things he has and how deeply he protects who and what he loves, you might understand why not having a carport affects his and therefore my well-being. Make no mistake, this request is not about cosmetics. It's about granting us relief from unnecessary hardships so that we can maintain our mental health. A 25-foot setback is unreasonable on a driveway that is only 26 feet long when our vehicles are 16 to 20 feet long. Little enforcement will deprive us of necessary use of this addition to our home and maintaining our mental health is necessary. I do believe in being held accountable and I do wholeheartedly apologize for not researching beforehand. I got caught up in the excitement and I didn't do my research, but instead of having us tear it down or to shorten it, I ask you to please fine us every year if necessary. In conclusion, please take note of the next three statements. You sent out 23 notices to our neighbors within 200 feet and I have 20 signatures in favor of you granting us the variance as requested. To my knowledge, like us, you did not receive any objections. Second, you did grant variance approvals for two carports on Catalina, a neighboring street in RS1. And third, if we were only 459 feet south in the open structures overlay zone, I would not need a variance to keep this carport as is. That's like the length of a football field. It might be easier for all of us if y'all just want to move the line just a little bit. Thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration.
Thank you. Stay up there for a second.
Yes, sir.
I've got some questions for you. Good job, by the way, take a deep breath.
Thank you.
All right, you said accountability and you stated fines. I don't know what our options are here on that. Have to be directed by the staff to that. I don't think there's a big fine situation on this. This is kind of an either-or situation. I wish there was a fine situation going on, but I'm not sure we can do that. What's done is done. You know, we have rules. Unfortunately, we just have cobs and all that. There's many of them. I don't know them all and I've been in this business 40 years. They're always changing. Whatever your contractor told you, you didn't need a permit, he was lying to you. Have you paid him in full?
Yes.
But he gave you a good price?
Yes, I think yes.
Can we not call him a contractor?
Okay.
Especially the builder. All right, those are my words. Board, question for the lady?
Is your contractor here?
Is he a relative?
No.
Okay, just out of the blue?
Well, he was building our neighbor's carport and I stopped and that's how we got to talking.
Did your neighbor get a permit?
He said that neighbor did not.
Yeah, so they'll be next, right?
No.
Okay, good.
But I believe he's on that list of 12. I didn't provide that list, but I believe he's, we're on that list, actually.
Any more questions?
That's a lot.
Hmm?
No, I'm thinking out loud.
Up? No, 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 no. Do you think? Down? I do not. Gary, I think I've asked him.
How long have you had it up?
I'm sorry?
When was it completed?
About two days before they got the call, sometime last month.
On the last 30 days?
Yes, ma'am, I believe so.
So is it right up next to your house?
It's in front of the garage.
Mm-hmm, you got about two feet.
Probably a foot.
Foot.
Foot, probably. That overhang.
How long is it?
It is about...
17 long?
We have like a 10...
And one foot's in code?
We have a 10-foot easement, I believe that's what it's called. And it's approximately 12 feet from the carport to the street. Oh, you can see that.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else?
Not about it this moment.
And some, three neighbors of ours showed up. I was surprised, but I don't know if they want to...
Well, that's public comment. They're more than welcome to. Hello, please state your name for the record.
Carmen Baldairis.
Carmen Baldairis.
But y'all have me down as Carmen Cabarrubi, I haven't got that fixed, sorry.
Welcome.
I just wanted to say what she said was very well-known for y'all and that I agree with her on whatever she says, okay?
Where do you live in relation?
1810 Cordell.
Okay, so you're across the street.
Do you have a carport?
No, ma'am, I do not. I like her carport, but funds, I don't have the funds right now.
Doesn't bother you at all?
No, sir.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Any more public comment? Come on, step up. Hi there.
Hi.
Please state your name, please.
My name is Sheila Lanier.
Hi, Sheila.
And I live at 1814 Cordell.
1814, so you're one or two houses away?
Two.
Two, okay.
And his carport is awesome looking. As soon as I saw it, I was like, oh, man, that just, it just made their house. I mean, it's gorgeous, it really is. And I like it being there. It kind of spruces up the neighborhood.
Mm-hmm. How's the neighborhood? Y'all friendly with each other and everything? Get along?
I mean, we get, yeah.
So the letter sheet put down, there's not a lot of support for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think that's it.
That's it.
Coming up. Appreciate it. I'd like to live in your neighborhood, too. You sound like you're the light of the party. All right, any more public comment? There being none, I'll shut the pub... Oh, one more, okay, come on up. Here you go, take a deep breath.
My name is Estella Diaz.
Hello, Stella.
Yeah, and I live at 1806 Cordell.
Okay.
And I'm in favor of the carport. I think it beautifies her home and makes the neighborhood look just as good. No problems with neighbors nor with the carport itself and hopefully this will open the door for myself and maybe others to want to build a carport because that is on my agenda for hopefully next year.
Well, I can't predict the future, but right now we're in trouble because they're going to get a permit.
I know, but I'm trying to hopefully this will open the doors for others.
It's a big one. We've got to, it's going to be tough.
Okay.
It's going to be tough. But thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you.
Any more public comment? There being none, I'm going to close public comment. Hello, board. Haven't seen you in almost 30 days.
Is there a larger photo of the open ordinance map of their, in their neighborhood? Just to see how much more purple there is?
There really, that is the portion that is not included. Everything, I mean, it goes all the way down. It hits like, I don't know if it's the river or something over there that kind of stops it, but I mean, that's, it's just this little bit that is not covered.
That's the only section that's not approved.
What's the criteria is why it's not?
Our, our guess is that the ordinance, or not the ordinance, but this was created before these homes were built. A lot of these homes were built in the 90s and the overlay was like late 90s?
I don't remember that.
2000s. So I don't think that that area was built up yet.
So the 12 homes that you found with carports that did are in that street or in the neighborhood?
They're in that neighborhood because I think there was one or two off of a wee but there might have been one off of Catalina. So it's that area.
Yes.
What causes the overlay to change? Or can we recommend changes? I'm talking about the future, getting past this.
Sure, it's basically like a zoning district that the city council adopted, saying within that area, carport rules would be different. You could definitely recommend that and staff could take that to the planning commission and city council, asking them to modify the boundary, but that, of course, would be a separate process.
We're going to do that today?
As part of your discussion, you could say you think that should be looked at, but you can't take any formal action to recommend it, but...
But we can suggest it. Was it the Riverview? Somebody refresh my memory, the Catalina area, the old one, that's Riverview addition? Scott, I see you back there. Is that Riverview?
That should be because it's right by Thane Elementary.
Okay, Riverview's been in a while, Catalina over there. That was, that was 63rd and 7th. Cordell was the name.
Because it comes over back around along the river, about the old fire.
Is that Riverview?
I think it's right, but I wouldn't want to guarantee.
It's been around a while. I don't know why that overlaid when they did that and it took Catalina's drive and things like that. It's Concho back there, Concho River, the dam's right.
And then it's going to come up to Bell.
Yep.
Politician probably there. All right, we got that clear as mud.
I mean, I think if...
I don't want to. It sounds like there's more coming in, more than done without permits. Of course, with the overlay, doesn't mean they're going to get a permit.
But with overlay, they still have to have a permit to build, so that doesn't...
And it allows up to five feet from the property line, so those that went, it allows up to five feet from the property line, so those that went all the way to the property line would still have to come see you guys, even if you were to extend the overlay.
Or move the post back.
Correct.
Still have that overhang there at the 5 feet, correct?
Yes.
Is it, what's it, what's her name? Is it the post on the property line?
No, the post is five feet from the property line.
Okay, so they're in compliance there.
Correct. Well, no, they're in compliance if they were in the overlay zone.
Oh, if they were in the overlay, okay. Same thing, only different, right?
I'll add, though, that that doesn't necessarily mean it would get approved to be in the overlay zone. What the ordinance says is carports are allowed to encroach in the front setback as long as they are built with construction and materials similar to the main house itself. So that, the idea was if you build it like it looks like it's part of the house, so typically that might mean a pitched roof and shingles and all of that. So a carport like this may or may not get approved. That would take some further review, but I just don't want you all to think if this was in the overlay, it would be automatically approved.
Well, since I've been on this board, the biggest problem is people come here and send the contractor or whoever didn't know we needed to get a permit. We say we approve it and go on and there's no, there's no fine. There's no...
Consequences.
You know? So they don't, if we had a fine, says she's wanting accountability, says she'd take a fine, is that an option for us? I mean, I think word would spread quicker if we held people's feet to the fire instead of sitting here and getting all emotional about it, feeling sorry for folks and saying, yeah, let's do it and it's going to cost $500.
Are there any options there?
No.
Yeah, it's because the word...
This board doesn't have the authority to do fines and it's certainly not in ordinance that way. Now, if they didn't comply, then they could be fined through code enforcement, but that's a separate process.
Well, word needs to get out that you need to get a permit. It's been a problem forever.
Those are building codes. I mean, maybe not everyone has personally mailed notice to them of the building codes, but they're adopted in the code. I mean, they have constructive knowledge of what's in the code.
They're dependent on that quote-unquote contractor. All right?
So the option here is that they shorten the carport by five feet?
Can you speak a little closer to your microphone?
So the option here is that they shorten the carport by five feet?
Are you asking them to remove it completely?
No, since they are not in the overlay zone, they are required to have the 25-foot setback, which means they would not...
They wouldn't have a carport period.
Have the carport, so...
So we're going to make a 12?
I just want to point out, there is a, if you do work without a permit, when you do come in for that permit, the fee is, the fee is doubled and so there is a penalty in that sense that when you do actually come in for a permit, you are paying a higher permit fee. It's not the same as a fine, but it is a penalty of sorts. And registered contractors who do work without a permit so many times can have their license to do work in a city revoked as well. Again, that doesn't help people who are out there doing the work without a permit. They're probably not registered contractors in the first place.
Was this one richer?
No.
No?
I'm running out of questions. Any more? Let's have an audience vote, how's that? What would the audience do right now?
I hate that she took the word.
I saw Judge James.
I mean, you trust him to do that. And you spend that kind of money and then you're going to have to tear that down and all these dollars. When there's 12 of them, probably he's not going to tear it down. So let's talk about the overlay some more.
Well, go ahead.
So the overlay obviously doesn't go that far back, but what is the, the through street, the first gray that turns into purple, what is that street?
Van Buren?
No, Van Buren's up and down.
Isn't that Avenue...
No. It's not Avenue.
Which one?
I was thinking that was Avenue.
Miss Cordell comes around off of Glenett? Is that Glenett somewhere in there? Or...
Maybe that's Glenett. Okay, so part of Glenett is...
Very busy street. There's North Van Buren and Cordell.
Okay, so that would be probably...
Edmund.
Edmund, yeah. And then Bannon.
So it's really just that pocket that's not in the zone? Because that's all that's back there from Catalina to Nucis? What is that?
Nuasis.
Nuasis?
She's not... She's not from here. She's not from here. So.
It's just a, it's a very, you know.
Yeah. So it is just that area. If we were to table this discussion, send it to city council for discussion on extending that overlay, and then come back to it. Yes.
Okay.
And then, and then if it is accepted into the overlay, you're still gonna have to come back and talk to us. You're still gonna have to pay your permit. You're still gonna have to do several things, but it does.
I don't like it, but.
Help a little bit in that area, because that's, that, that whole area is like a big horseshoe right there that you're looking at, that joins back into Edmund. It's, it's secluded by itself. It's not going on forever. Catalina is the outside street. It's like a loop that goes all the way around.
Yeah, that's definitely something the board could, could do. It would take, the very earliest that could go through the process would be the November planning commission, probably to council in December or early January. That would mean we couldn't bring it back to you all until probably the February meeting. Maybe January, depending on when the council meeting falls, but.
Sure. Okay, and, and then the other eleven carports that are on your list, would those be on hold also?
Well, that's if they come forward with an application.
Okay.
But just in general, we would typically hold any enforcement action. So, for example, those twelve or eleven that might get notices of violation, that any action on those notices of violation would be suspended while there's an action in process, in this case being the overlay, until that's decided. Then, once it's decided, either they would just go away because they're legal or the city staff would pick up enforcement action. Again, if, say, city council decided not to expand the boundary.
Okay.
But didn't, didn't you say before, or maybe I misunderstood what you said before, even if, even if we suggested that they extend the umbrella and, and we get the overlay extended, that doesn't automatically allow carports, correct?
That's correct. I mean, they still have to apply, get the permits, and go through a review. And so it's, it's still not a guarantee at that point. That's right. But depending on the design of the carport, it, it could be allowed.
I think what the, what the overlay does is it does allow them to get closer to that property line. So there is, there is the possibility that after the review and everything, it may pass without having to come here. It's those that are on the property line or up to the property line, or the design may not be acceptable.
Well, there are three neighbors that they were on table. The design standpoint.
I have a question. The current ones that are already up, are they all the same material? Or do they match the house? How, how does that go?
Well, the one next is not the same. They all, driving through the neighborhood this morning, they all pretty much look the same.
Okay.
Material differs. Some of them are more wood than metal.
Okay.
But most of them look the same.
Okay.
Well, which one do you, boss? You think so? Nope. No, I don't think so. Any more comments?
Yes. Can you come up there?
So I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
So if we were to make a recommendation for this to go to city council for the possible overlay to extend into the na, the full neighborhood, Mr. James has said that would probably not be back to us until December or January. Is that an issue with you, that you're having to wait for an answer from us until then?
No, I mean, the anticipation's gonna be eating at us, but I would greatly appreciate that y'all are willing to do that, because we feel maybe it was an oversight or because we're not included in that purple zone. So no, we, I would be very grateful, because at least that gives us a chance.
Hope. Okay. Thank you.
And to our knowledge, everything was built to specs. We used the good material and that kind of thing. But the, that was per the contractor, so apparently he's not all that credible.
I, um, I think, Brandon, so if we, if we ask for this to go to city council, do we table this or do we?
So.
What's the easiest?
You can table it, and I mean, I think with the discussion we've had, John could initiate the measures to take it to plan commission and council. But I don't think y'all could take a formal action since we don't actually have it on the agenda. So table it, and then, I mean, if John agrees to, show it and initiate that process.
So, and that can be part of the table motion?
Again, I mean, I, I wouldn't say in your motion to recommend. No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go that far. It would just be a, a table on this case, because the overlay zone, that's a whole different issue that's not noticed on this meeting.
So, John, are you gonna go to city council with this?
Sure, we can, we can initiate a case.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
We have seven votes here. How many would, needs to be? What's the vote count for approval?
To approve anything, I mean, it has to be six. But to table it, I mean, I don't know that that would necessarily have to have six, but.
So I would like to make a motion to table this without giving any further verbiage that we already discussed.
A second.
Here's a second. Any discussion before we vote? If we, if we, if we, if we vote for it, we don't win, do they have, what happens then?
If, if the motion doesn't carry, I mean, someone can make another motion still.
Okay.
Yeah.
What mechanism forces them to tear it down? Our vote?
If you denied the variance, then, yeah, that would effectively do it. I mean, would ultimately, it would be code enforce, if they willingly take it down, then it would be a code enforcement.
All right.
So, and Gary, on mine, the reason I'm asking for it to be tabled is because I don't, you know, right now with twelve cases coming forth.
I'm with you.
The same guy is telling the same thing to everybody in town. We have people that are already wanting to put one in their yard. I think it's better to table it at this point, see what happens with city council, and then bring them back. Instead, otherwise, it is against the rules and it would be a no.
Very global thought there, Carrie. Thank you. Okay, there's a motion on the table. We're ready to vote. All in favor for the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed? There being none, seven zero for tabling. Thank you, ma'am. Just. Don't worry about it too much. It all will get somehow. Spread the word. Get a permit, get a permit, get a permit. Social media, go on Facebook, get a permit. We need a permit when we need. Looks like, uh. Let's move on to item number, uh, four. Looks like the same deal. ZBA twenty-five, twenty-three dash twenty-five, seventeen forty-six Cordell Drive, single member district number two, Tom Thompson. Request for a variance from section five oh one of zoning ordinance to allow for a zero front yard setback rather than the required twenty-five feet within the single family residence RS one zoning district in Angelo Heights neighborhood.
Given that this is in that same neighborhood, we can go through the full presentation, but I might suggest that you table this one as well, since it's literally on the same street.
Let's hear a motion to table this one also.
Motion to table.
I would take public comment. I mean, people might be here, so.
All right, folks. Council advises me to take public comment, so if anybody would like to have public comment, step up, state your name, and tell us a story.
Who's this name?
That you? Come on up, sir. Welcome to this nightmare.
I've got a short story, and then I've got, uh.
Say your name, please, sir.
My name's Gary Lacy.
Gary Lacy.
Yes, yes. Born and raised here. I've got a list from all the neighbors, and I can get more. There's probably twelve here.
Okay.
That approve and love the carport, said it helps the, uh, the view of the, of that corner of the street there. I think a long story short, back in two thousand and eighteen, I made a call to the city. Talked to a lady. My brain and my reasoning just takes people at their word. I didn't write her name down, didn't get her, position, and I told her what I was gonna do, and she said, who, how you doing it? And I said, she goes, you're gonna have a contract? And I said, no, I'm gonna do the work myself, and my son may help me some. And she goes, well, in that case, you don't have to have a permit. So I took it at that. Now, y'all could tell me that that didn't happen, but that's the way it happens. So I went to work and I built it. It's been through hailstorms and high winds that we've had. And made it, I've made the post, the cedar posts there and stained them to match the fence around the, around my house. And the, uh, painting on the rafters inside matched the, the paint on my garage and the trim on it. And the, the metal matches the same color. Now.
But you did not get a permit?
I did not get, because I, I was told I didn't have that one. But again, I just took that.
Yeah, I understand what she, basically what she was saying is you're homestead, so you could do that construction. I don't know why she didn't say you still need to get a permit.
And I would have paid for a permit.
Sure you would.
I would have had, I had no problem with it. That's why I called. And so I built it, and it's been there for this long, going on a little over five years. And then about three weeks ago, I get a knock on my door, and the gentleman hands me the notice that I need to show up. And, um, so I was kind of at a loss at that point. I said, why? He said, he said, sorry, he said, I'm just the messenger.
I'm just the messenger. So he's supposed to shoot the messenger, though, right?
I told him, I said, I got my gun, you know, I didn't, and, uh, but, um.
That was old tape. That back in the Roman.
He, he, he was, he was a nice man.
They are nice.
I appreciate the time to talk to y'all, but I mean, that's, that's what happened. But it's been there for this long, and nobody said it weren't, I mean, they, the city's worked on the street. They worked on the fire hydrant in my yard. Luckily, they did that before I put that, the turf in. Because of the rain, I was trying to save water, and my grass went to pieces, so I put the turf in.
Very nice looking. I don't know where the picture was taken, but very nice looking.
And I try to keep everything there up to date and clean. You know, I'll pick up the trash, because I'm on the corner lot, so I get a lot of empty bottles and stuff.
Even when we're doing the right thing, it's still the wrong thing, right?
Right.
Yeah, I, I.
So that's what I've got, and that's where I'm standing. So I'm at y'all's mercy, and I've got, like I said, if y'all wanna see these letters.
I don't think we need them right now. Do we? You, you heard for the last applicant what they're gonna do, what Terry recommended, which I think was a good recommendation, to get in the co, overlay zone and go through that and.
When did you say it was built?
Ma'am?
When did you say it was built?
Two thousand and eighteen.
Okay.
How long have you lived in the house?
I got there in probably two thousand and ten or so. And since then, I mean, I, I went in and redid the whole inside of the house, because it was a mess. College kids were renting, it was a rent house at that point.
Did you have the property tax office cut up, please?
So I did, did all that, rebalancing on that and doing the fence and.
When they're in violation, does the property tax office still pay them, charge them for that carport? Probably.
Can you get closer to your microphone, please?
Oh, excuse me. I'm just curious. That's just off-the-cuff question. Does, uh, property tax, when you're in violation, does Tom Green, County appraisal district, still charge you? I'm sure they do, even though you're in violation. You're breaking the law, you're in violation, now pay us. Okay. Thank you, Gary. Are you, are you done? I'm sorry.
I, I, so I, it's tabled and I, place where it is for this one, and now I'll get contacted again?
Yeah.
Am I free to go, or do I need to stay for?
No, you need to go chop some wood.
That's fine, huh?
Get dinner started.
Get dinner started, yeah. If, if you're done, thank you.
Okay. I want to thank y'all for your time, and I appreciate it.
You bet.
And go from there.
Yes, sir.
Thank y'all.
You're gonna go play democracy now in politics. You're gonna go play politics and democracy. You're gonna go in front of the city council and get your, what's it called? Overlay? Overlay zone moved to your area.
Okay.
Have fun. So keep an eye on the agenda of city council, John, or planning?
Planning first.
It would go to the planning commission first.
First, okay. It's on the website, under the city website.
Would you want to get a, would you want to get an email or text?
I'm not sure if y'all will or not.
Or mail or anything?
Probably not. Probably not.
There, there may be notices. We will have to research that as we work on the case.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. All right.
Well, thank y'all very much. Y'all have a great day.
Sit tight for a while. Everything will work out.
God bless.
God bless you. Let's see. Any more public comment? There being none, I'm gonna close public comment.
Can you have a motion in a second?
We do?
Yep.
Yep, yep. I second it.
All right. Straighten me up. What was the motion and the comment again?
Motion was to table this.
Okay. And then we had a second on that?
Yes, sir.
I second it.
You seconded it? All right, let's have, let's have a vote. We're ready to vote? For no comment, vote? All right. Let's have a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. Being none, seven zero. Next item. There better not be another carport. No. ZBA twenty-three twenty-three seventeen twenty-five Live Oak Street, single member district, uh, number five, Karen Hesse Smith. Request for a variance from section four oh six A point four of the zoning ordinance. Oh, short-term rental, which requires five hundred from the lot line of one short-term rental to another located in the Santa Rita neighborhood. Now, go and tell me how they're in violation on this, Ms. Ray.
Okay, I can do that. So, Ray line, very planner. This is the case, they wanted to do a short-term rental, and it's within five hundred feet of another. They are in district five, Karen Hesse Smith, in the Santa Rita neighborhood. It is RS one. So we did send out twenty-two notifications. We received three in favor, only one opposed. And so if you look at the green line, it is property to property line, and it's four hundred and eighteen feet from another one. If you go down by the road, because you'd have to make that little bit of a churn and everything, it does make it over the five hundred feet.
Can I interrupt a second? We had this discussion at the last meeting. What did we end up with on that one?
We approved it because it's.
I thought, I thought there's gonna be some, uh, straightening out on this as a, as a crow flies versus that the street.
We, we are working on an ordinance amendment that'll be going to city council.
Okay.
But that hasn't gone forward yet. In fact, I think it's going to the planning commission this month.
So we're gonna table this also?
And that's up to you all, but.
The only thing with tabling this one is they cannot, they, they cannot go to planning commission to get approval to be an SDR.
Right, you would be delaying them opening a short-term rental live two or three months if you tabled it.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Okay. Just pictures of, I'm gonna use the pointer thing, that now has a magnifying glass. I don't know if I like that on this case. But this one is looking down Live Oak, and then this one is looking down, um.
Van Buren, right?
Van Buren, thank you. It, it is a pretty wide. It is a pretty wide street, I mean, you can't see the house from, from down there. So, the exist, it is an existing lot and home that the applicant believes their request would be keeping with the development of the homes. Short-term rentals are, you know, supposed to be like residential. This action is the minimum that will meet their needs, it'll allow them to at least take their case to planning commission. It doesn't guarantee that planning commission will approve them, but it allows them to at least go in front of planning commission. And so staff is recommending approval.
Way to go, staff. Thank you.
Is there any questions?
I have none. Any questions, Ray?
I'm good.
All right, thank you, Ray.
I have a question for John.
John?
So, the information is going to planning commission this month on the short-term rental?
Yes, and a proposed change to the ordinance is going to planning commission for consideration. One of the things it would do, at least as staff is recommending, is to eliminate the five hundred-foot separation requirement between short-term rentals.
Is it being reduced to zero, or is there a number, magic number?
Yes, it's being reduced to zero. The, the thinking being that it's still a discretionary decision by the planning commission, and so if they believe two are too close to each other or something like that, they can always deny, but it, it would get rid of the hard and fast rule of five hundred feet.
Okay, thank you.
So we won't have to see any more of these as a ZBA?
Well, if it's approved, there is quite a bit of controversy around the short-term rental ordinance, and some people like the five hundred feet separation, so it may or may not change.
I wasn't asking you to predict the future, yes, but I was just making a statement that, that would, if it did go the way you're talking about, we wouldn't have to deal with this anymore. Okay. All right. Any more questions?
Thank you.
Yeah. Let's see here, I need to go to public comment. Any public comment? Step right on up and state your name.
Good afternoon. My name's Jarvis Fletcher.
Hello, Jarvis.
Seventeen twenty-five is my property. Originally, we had, I think, applied in June. We met that five hundred-foot criteria, and we thought all was well. Well, since that time, we've fully furnished the house, we've done, replaced the plumbing, replaced the electrical, new HVAC, new water heater, just about everything, all new fixtures, all new sheet rock, everything, with the presumption that we would get approved because we did meet that five hundred-foot threshold. We were subsequently sent a letter or an email saying that we did not meet that five hundred, that they had made a mistake with the, I think it was twenty-five twelfth Princeton, so they had the wrong address. So we've spent, you know, many thousands of dollars fixing this place up, and now we're at, you know, at whatever you guys decide is what we're gonna have to do moving forward. And we could, we flipped quite a few houses. We could flip it, but you know, you're gonna build out the house a little bit differently if you're gonna flip it or keep it as a short-term rental.
Sure.
And also, the other house was hidden. We were told it was hidden on the map, so we had nothing to do with that. We, we, I kept calling and making sure that everything was still good for us to move forward, and kept being told, yes, there was nothing else out there within that five hundred feet. But apparently, there's a house that was hidden and not on the map.
Okay. Any question?
Yes.
Question? Question? Uh-uh. The board's quiet today, aren't they? Is that it? Thank you, Jarvis. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah. All right. Put my glasses back on. Any comments, board comments on this item? There being none, let's go to the vote. Anybody motions?
I'll make a motion for approval.
Second. You already had seven seconds, do we need to vote?
Did you call for other public comment?
Oh, I, there, thank you, council. Other public comment?
You did that already, Gary.
I did.
You said if anyone else wants to speak.
I did.
That's additional public comment.
What's getting on me for? I thought I did. They said I did?
You did.
I'm trying to get, look through my glasses. All right, no public comment? Oh, let's see, I gotta go this way. Public comment is closed, excuse me, folks. All right, we have a, do I need to redo the motion?
No. We have a motion in a second on the floor.
I made a motion to approve.
Okay.
And a second.
We're okay? All right, thank you.
And you got a second.
All right, let's have a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There being none, passes seven, zero. In favor of the plaintiff. Judge G. All right, item number six, ZBA twenty-three dash twenty-six, am I on the right one, right? Thirteen oh five South Jackson Street, single member district number five, Karen Hesse Smith, request for a variance from section four oh six A point four of the zoning ordinance, which requires five hundred feet from the lot line of one short-term rental to another located... Now, I'm having a flash back here. It reads just like the last one, Santa Rita neighborhood. Why can't I just go item five just like number six? Is their next one the same one? Can we go all these at one time?
Well, that's why we grouped them together for you. I mean, first two, now these two.
Thank you, Ray. Go ahead. But state your name first.
Ray Lineberry Planner.
Thank you.
Me again. So this is similar to the case before. It is in district five, Karen Hesse Smith, and it is Santa Rita neighborhood. They are requesting a variance from the five hundred-foot separation for a short-term rental. We sent out twenty-six notifications. We received actually two in favor. There is one more right before coming in here, that all they said was they were in favor.
Which, do you know which house it was?
I do not.
Okay.
Again, if you do the green line, the property line to property line, it's two hundred and sixty-eight feet. If you go down and around, it is five hundred and twenty-five feet. This is, again, the property that was not on our maps, right there, is the one that caused this to come forward. Looking down the street, if you look on the picture on the left, top left, that is, the house is there, the blue house, and you would go down that street and then take a left, and then the middle picture is taking that left. You can't really see the house from the distance. And again, we believe that this is keeping with the development of the homes, and it is an existing lot and home, and this is the minimum that will meet the needs, and staff is recommending approval. With that, is there any questions?
I'm supposed to ask that?
Am I? Oh, I'm sorry.
See, I cleaned my glasses and looked at my notes.
Oh, well.
Is there any questions, Ray? I guess there's not, Ray. I can e, I can even think of one. It's my birthday tomorrow.
Thirty-six anniversary of how many years?
Inversion.
Yeah.
Invert, invert, when in doubt, invert, invert. All right, let's move on here. Public comment! Step on up, and y'all line up so I don't have to ask every time. Y'all will comment, y'all come on up after the next one.
My name's Michaela Gorman.
Hi, Michaela.
Hi, I represent Dylan Burns, he's the owner of the property. I'm his property manager. I manage all of his Airbnbs that he has all over Texas. Before he bought this house, he told me to check, check all the rules and stuff, and so I called, and I was told that the maps looked good, and then I also checked the maps online, and there wasn't a short-term rental property on the map online. And then we got an email that there was, and then I was told that the maps aren't always updated, so it's kinda like the same, same thing that y'all just...
You know, that's the first time we've heard of it.
Yeah.
I thought I dreamed it, you know, nightmare. Yeah, well, bless your heart. Well, you're in trouble with your boss, aren't you?
Yes.
Yes. Well, you're lucky you got staff recommending approval, so we don't have to discuss too much unless somebody wants to. But I heard, I heard a moan on the board when that was being presented, and I, not sure, but go ahead, continue on.
I, that's it, I guess.
Yeah.
That's, yeah.
Any comments for Michaela? Maybe that was a yawn I heard. Okay. All right, thanks, Michaela. Any more public comments? Step up. Come on. All right, councilor, can I shut her down? All right. Public comment's closed. All right, board, let's talk.
Make a motion to approve it.
I'll second it.
Okay, let's, motion to approve in a second, let's have the vote, all in, oh, let's see, you want to talk about anymore? There being none, okay, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There being none, passes seven, zero. That was a yawn, wasn't it?
It wasn't me, Ellen.
Might've been me. All right, where we, where we at? We're going to number seven? Same thing?
No.
No, Larry Miller's section, single member district. Let me read this real quick, so we stay out of trouble. ZBA twenty-three dash twenty-four, thirty-two zero zero six Oak Forest Court, single member district number six, Larry Miller, request for variance for section five oh one point eight, zone allowance, zero foot side yard setback instead of required five feet in the single RS one zoning at the corner of a structure in Sunset Neighborhood. All right. Hi, Sheri, I was wondering if you was gonna get up and...
While I was beginning to wonder also?
Yeah, you can go, Ray, you need a break, she's been working hard.
Hi, Julie, how can I help?
I don't know. I don't even know how that happened.
That's good. I like that. Yeah, you did that on purpose, did you? You had a little levity to those places.
Good afternoon, ZBA. It's nice to be before you. Sheri Bailey, principal planner. This application is actually a very interesting one, and it's unique to this piece of property. So I, I don't anticipate that there will be a second one quite like this. The applicant did build a structure for a outdoor recreational to cover where they sit by their pool, whether it's to eat or just together by their pool. It, it's a nice structure, the neighborhood has commented that it's a nice structure. He did not get a permit, he does know that he has to correct that problem. However, the structure that he built is this structure right here, and it's right up against his fence, both in front, and it's the fence that goes right along straight back. That fence that goes right straight back, however, does not go or follow the property line. The property line actually curves as the street indicates, and then it goes over into the, at the alley area there, so it does come out. So it's just this one little point that he is, that is the zero, and then everything after that goes out, first two feet and then five feet from actually that fence, and so that's why we have it worded, zero side yard setback only at one point.
You do have it worded that way?
I do.
Okay, all right.
We sent out, we sent out twenty-one notifications. We started off with three responses, as you can see, in favor. They all are across the street from the applicant. We did get another response, the person says, "Oh, let, live, live, live." That was neither a support or against, but I did include it as a yellow star. We did not receive anything from anyone against the application. Now, I know I can move this. It just doesn't like me. Brian did tell me it was just my...
It's just your fingers.
Yeah.
And that proves it.
So it, as you can see, on the right in, facing you, it's about two foot at that point from the fence, which actually makes it significant from where the property line is, and as you can see on your left, my right, the property line actually follows very closely the curb line, so he is only at that one point is he asking for a variance.
There you go. Did not.
This is a very uniquely shaped piece of property. The property line actually weaves, it weaves a little bit more than it shows on that survey, so he is a little bit further from the property line. The owner built the fence in a straight line following the fence line, and that's why it gives the impression that it's right next to the property line when it is not. He admits that he built the accessory building without a permit, and he is going to apply for that permit, and that granting this variance, in looking at this, staff believes that it will not adversely affect the area. The nature of the neighborhood will not be disrupted.
So Sheri?
Yes.
The, the plat, or the survey was dated, I think, two thousand and four, so he did it prior to, or two thousand and four, or prior?
No, he ju, he built it, I don't know exactly, about, about a year ago, a little less than a year ago, I believe, but...
Was, I thought that was the shape on the survey that you showed us.
But that is, yes, that is the shape on there. I'm, I'm guessing that...
Do you have that on here? And I apologize, Commissioner Jackson, maybe I didn't understand your question. The survey was done in two thousand and four, October eleventh, two thousand and four. If that was already on there...
Oh, his building?
You, well, that piece that you showed us.
The long standing building? I think he drew that on there.
Oh, okay.
No, that's to the left. What I'm talking about is the one that is drawn on the survey, and you have an arrow pointed onto it.
Okay, let me go back.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe.
Did they just pull it like that?
So you...
Can we be taller?
I guess I have to be a lot taller. Okay. Are you talking about the long?
Yes, isn't that what you said was built?
Yes, that he built, but that is just recently. I think he drew that on there.
That's, that's drawn on by a surveyor, that was in two thousand and four, the date on the bottom.
Okay.
I think his drawing's to the left, the scratching.
You want me to elaborate on the other? I was gonna say, the applicant is here.
Okay, well, go ahead and finish what you're doing, I just had that question.
It used to be a playground.
Okay.
Just to make it easier so you understand, it used to be, it was like a...
I'm sorry, can you speak into the mic, so we're, we're on TV?
You gotta state your name.
I'm Bruce Stewart.
I'm Bruce.
That used to, that little dill that was on the survey used to be a playground. It was like a little structure playground.
So you built that?
I didn't build it, it was...
I mean, now, the building.
Now, the pavilion's there now, yes.
Okay.
You had a builder do that, contractor?
Had a concrete guy do the concrete, and then a, a guy that does it on the side, the building part.[1748.37]
Okay, go ahead and take a seat, and we'll call you up for public comment here shortly.
Thank you, Sherri.
I apologize. Up?
Stand on your left foot, Sherri.
It is just me.
With all the change in your heart pocket.
It is just you. It is just me. I swear. I'm sorry. Thank you. No, next. Okay. So staff did go out, we looked at it, we did talk to a couple of property owners that were adjacent to this, and staff is recommending that we approve, that you approve the zero setback variance for that corner. Are there any other questions?
I gotta ask, sir. Is there any more questions, Sherri? Board? Thank you, Sherri.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri.
Yes, we see.
All right, now it's public comment time. Anybody that has a public comment on this, line up, and let's go.
So again, Bruce Stewart. I gave myself a verbal warning on this deal. Anyway, anyway, it's M and G welding is the actual, the people that do it on the side, M and G welding. That's who put up the pavilion.
Okay.
And evidently, I guess they didn't know we needed a permit either, so I'm asking for forgiveness so I can move on to the permit process. And I concur with their recommendation, of course.
Any questions?
No, it's...
Hold on there.
Oak Forest, thirty-two oh-six, Oak Forest. No. No, just our bookkeeping.
Oh, bookkeeping. Okay. Were you having a question?
Yes, sir.
Questions? Any more public comments?
Yes, I am Leah Gomez. I'm at thirty-two twelve Oak Forest Court. I am the neighbor.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I guess some other people, as you saw on the list, actually turned in a form, and I just came here in person to say that we love the structure, we can't wait for our invite for the pool party, and it actually just looks a lot nicer than what the prior homeowners did or did not do with their property. So I think it looks really nice, and I agree with everything, and I hope that y'all can make these adjustments for this family.
Thank you.
Thank you.
More public comment? Guess not. We'll close public comment. Board comments? I'll make a motion to approve. There's a motion for approval on the table here. Do we have a second?
A second.
There's a second. Any more comments on the board? All right, let's go to the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There being none, pass is seven zero. Okay, item number eight, request, uh...
May I just go to the permit? You got my name?
Yes.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks for watching.
Back at you. Have you got a dead battery over there?
So do you want me to do it?
Oh, I see, I see. Bringing in the big guns for this. All right. Item number eight, uh, ZBA twenty-three dash two-seven Holiday Drive, single member district number three, Harry Thomas, request for variance from section five-oh-one of the zoning ordinance to allow a five-foot front yard setback instead of a fifteen-foot in the RM dash one zoning district for one thousand and one through thousand and sixty-nine and ten thousand and forty-four through thousand and fifty-six. Holiday Drive in the Glenmore neighborhood. So we're dealing with, how many lots here?
A bunch.
A bunch.
Ah, thought I'd ask a question. There you go.
About twenty.
That's okay, John.
Actually, twenty-two.
All right, all right. Thank you.
John James, Director of Planning and Development Services. You'll notice on your staff reports, Aaron Vanoy prepared these cases, but he's out of town, and so I'm presenting this and the next.
Welcome.
This, as you can see, there was platted in nineteen eighty-four, and as you can see, these lots are smaller than is typical. They're a little bit, they're not quite as deep, and so they were actually platted with lesser setbacks than what's required, but under our ordinance, it's the stricter of the setbacks that apply. If you look at the plat, that allows the reduced setbacks, but our ordinance still applies. There was a variance granted in the past, and I think I'm probably getting ahead of myself, but there was a variance granted in the past, but under the terms of that, it expired after twelve months, and of course, all the homes weren't built within twelve months, and so this is a request for variance for all of those lots, basically a repeat. We did send out notifications to four different property owners, did not receive any opposition, and one in favor. You can see here a proposed sample site plan of the properties. Again, these lots were platted in nineteen eighty-four with a five-foot setback, but the two thousand zoning ordinance subsequent to that created a more restrictive setback of fifteen feet. With the variance, this would make them consistent with the other homes that were built, and we don't see any negative impacts from that. So staff is recommending approval of the five-foot variance instead of the fifteen feet. Again, this is a little bit unique situation because these were platted a little bit smaller than what would be allowed today, and with that five-foot setback. And we're recommending as a condition or a stipulation of this, rather than be bound to the twelve-month, that's the normal requirement for a variance, because it's basically doing it for the whole, that whole street, that the twelve months be waived in this case, so that as these build out, whether they're built out in two years or ten years, that they still get the advantage of that five feet without having to come back again, you know, ten or fifteen, twenty years later.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, are there already houses built on the lots?
No, some of them have already been built. I believe the request is for all vacant lots. They're basically wanting to move forward on these lots that have sat there for a while, and they wanted to build with the five-foot setback, just like all the others that were built years ago, but that new fifteen-foot setback is what's placed a stumbling block for them.
Thank you.
Well, what they put there now, thus far, is very nice, good-looking product from the river, but right across the way there, it's good.
That's really an overview of it. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have none. You have a question, John? Got any, John?
Are the lots in blue that we're doing?
Or the red?
Are they red?
The red. The blue are the ones, the other people who got notified, but the red are the subject properties.
But you have one red with a star on it, in approval?
That was in favor, yeah. It's basically the applicant is in favor, I believe.
That's good. That's good. Everything's color-coded.
That always helps.
Yeah.
Public comment? Welcome, state your name for breakfast.
Zane Willer. I'm the builder and the owner of these particular lots. I think one of the, he did a great job explaining, when we came in before we purchased them, the plat, can you back that up, John? Or do I have to do it? Right there. Yeah, so if you see right there, the variance, uh, where we at? Go forward one. So on the plat, when we actually came in to talk about it, because we realized they were small, they have, on the recorded plat has a five-foot, the new variance, or the new ordinance when it was passed, you know when that was passed?
Two thousand.
In two thousand. That's when they effectively said you had to have a fifteen-foot setback. I think staff probably didn't realize that that was what had occurred, so when we bought them. The problem is only nineteen hundred and twenty square foot worth of ground surface. Our main intent to ask for the five-foot front setback is to ensure that we can get rear parking to get them off the front, just because that street's narrow, and we're trying to soften it up so that people can park in the back. We don't have as much traffic in the front there.
So you're going to a rear entry garage on the next one?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Any more public comment? See, I asked.
Good afternoon. My name is William Bodnar. I live at one sixteen West Riverside.
Hi, Wayne.
And my comments maybe are, this isn't the best place for them, because I understand these have been platted back in the eighties, and I don't know how long before all these are expected to be fully up with people living there, but if there's twenty-two times two cars, this area is already really jammed up, and I spoke to several people already, and I still don't know who I'm supposed to speak to about this issue, but my issue is really quality of life and safety right there. With the Bell Street, people are flying down there, and if you're gonna have all these residences there, that intersection is almost a seven-way intersection if you count that little back alley that they want to park in, and I'm just trying to understand what the reality is gonna be like when all those are finished, built up, kids playing around, dogs running around. It just seems like the potential for a lot of chaos just really bottlenecks right there. And so I don't know if my comment is appropriate here, but I'm just, as a neighbor, I'm just concerned going forward with the safety, and then also with the, you know, property value, what that's gonna do to that area going forward.
So what do you propose and they do?
Well, I know, I spoke to operations, and he told me to speak to an engineer. I thought of just like a quick to get things moving, is there any way we could reduce maybe the speed limit right there on Bell? Because I thought that could do a lot. If you brought that down to thirty or something, that could really help ease, because there's no light, there's no really direction, so it's pretty much a free-for-all there for people to go left, to take a right, and then, as I said, it's basically a seven-way, almost a nine-way if you count West and East Riverside, which are not far away from that, and there's just a lot of swirling. I understand in the eighties, they probably said, "All right, sure, approve it, looks good, progress, that's great," and as homes start to get built, there's another development, sort of kitty-corner to that, right on the corner of East Riverside, and then there's some other developments over on Estella, and so in the last two years, I've seen, I don't know, twelve to sixteen new residences come in there, and it hasn't been anything crazy. It's not like the races are starting right away, but I'm just seeing it go forward, and as we increase more people, more cars, more traffic, doesn't seem like anyone that's spoken to...
Well, what would happen, how long have you lived on Estella?
Uh, about two years.
Two years, okay. Well, what happened is, in the scenario you were talking about there, if it gets that way, they'd put more than you're going to predict in the future again, right? They'd probably put a light there, some kind of traffic light. That's Van Zant, you know, right there, where it all comes in, three roads coming, the river drives come in there, and Holiday Drive comes in, and then the rear entry garage are using the rear, most, uh, there's three houses on Estella that back up, no Riverside there, that are rear entry garages. I think the rest of them there on Riverside are front entry garages. So there is a kind of a break going on there that's eclectic, for a better term, for lack of a better term, but if they would, the traffic patterns got too heavy. Bell Street is a heavily traveled street.
Yeah.
Last count I had on there was fifteen thousand cars, but that was in nineteen ninety-two. But, uh, so they're probably put a red light there, would be my, some kind of traffic control device.
All right. So is that something that happens, different meeting, different time?
Well, you can, uh...
Yeah, that's, I mean, again, that's really not the purview of this board.
Okay.
Yeah, unfortunately, the time for those sort of concerns would have been back in nineteen eighty-four.
Sure, just missed it.
And really, all you're looking at is whether or not to grant them a variance to build a little closer to the front, so the number of lots and number of homes that are gonna be out there, we have no ability to change at this point.
Okay.
And really, no ability to change the road network. That would be a question for operations and engineering. They could do...
They said that that's not something they would deal with. I called them, and they just kind of pushed me back to you guys, so that's why I thought I'd come to the meeting and see if you...
You're welcome to come up and public comment and state it, and that helps a lot, by the way.
Okay, all right.
Yes, it really does.
Well, aside from all of that, in terms of progress and going forward, I'm for it, as long as hopefully there is something going down the line that will adjust for quality of life and safety there.
They are putting up real nice-looking property.
Yeah, they are beautiful, so yeah, I'm certainly happy with what they've done so far, and hopefully it's also safe there, too.
Yeah.
So, thanks for hearing me out.
They have more guts than I do.
Appreciate y'all.
Yeah, thank you.
That's a different builder.
What are the sizes of those lots? The applicant might need to, I think he said, I don't recall the exact number, twelve?
I know there's several of them that are oversized, but just the average.
The square footage?
The size of the lot?
Yeah. No, the lot itself. Nineteen hundred and twenty square feet.
Okay, and so what is the lot size, the dimensions of it? Size, dimension, not the square foot?
I believe he said the lot size was nineteen...
I don't want the square foot.
Width by thirty-two foot by sixty.
They were designed for townhomes, right? That a townhome, was that a townhome plat?
I think so.
Yeah.
So it's being built as townhomes? I didn't see that.
RM one.
Oh.
Any more comments? Before we public comment, move on to our comments. You can get straight now on?
Yes, sir.
Let's talk about it. I hear some concern, so let's visit. None? No concern? You got any? Bob?
Sir?
Hmm? No?
None.
That must have been a yawn again. Uh, let's see. I'm gonna ask for the vote.
Motion.
First, I'm gonna ask for the motion, and I'm curious what it's gonna be. Asking for a motion. Motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve it as staff has recommended.
A second.
There's one, approval on second. Want any more comment on this? Ready to go? All right, so the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There being none, seven zero. Thank you. Item number nine, ZBA twenty-three dash twenty-eight Riviera Lane. I've never heard of that one. Tommy Heber, same with District One, request for variance from section five-oh-one of the zoning ordinance to allow rear yard setback of ten feet instead of the required twenty feet in the planned development PD twenty-three dash zero four, which requires a normal RS-dash-one rear yard setback for lots twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six in the Bentwood Country Club Estate subdivision, section forty-five, within the five thousand block of Riviera Drive and the Country Club neighborhood. Glad I didn't have to read out that address. Hello, John?
Thank you. Again, John James, Director of Planning and Development Services. So this is a variance for those five lots you see there on the map. You can see a picture here of the work that started on some of those, and right there on the right, it describes how far along each of these are, and you'll see why that's relevant in just a second, but work has already begun on some of these. You can see we did send out our notices, thirty-five notices sent out, but we received ten in opposition and none in favor. And so these are the site plans for each of the lots. Again, the normal setback would be twenty feet. The one at fifty-three thirteen Riviera is proposed to be about ten feet, two inches from the property line. The next one is about ten and a half, or ten feet, five inches, and we can come back to these if there are specific questions. This one's a little over eleven feet from the rear property line. This one's twelve-nine, and then ten-ten. So these, the second bullet here is kind of the critical one. Staff, there was an ordinance adopted for this area to create a planned development. As part of that, the front setbacks were reduced. There was a change to the side setbacks, as well as a change to basically the size of a home that could be on the lot. It's what we call the floor area ratio, was allowed to be slightly bigger. Nowhere in the discussions of that, either at the Planning Commission or City Council, was there any mention of reducing the rear setback. In fact, there was a question at the Planning Commission, is the rear setback going to be reduced? And the answer was no. Unfortunately, there was a staff error, and on the ordinance that went to City Council, listed within the ordinance, it listed a ten-foot rear setback as one of the changes for the planned development. So I won't go into all the details on that, but that's why the permits were issued for these five homes that would have, that would be within the twenty-foot setback, in some places, almost ten feet from the rear property line. There really is no physical hardship that would warrant allowing them to be closer than twenty feet, but again, per... listed within the ordinance, it listed a ten-foot rear setback as one of the changes for the planned development. So I won't go into all the details on that, but that's why the permits were issued for these five homes that would have, that would be within the twenty-foot setback, in some places, almost ten feet from the rear property line. There really is no physical hardship that would warrant allowing them to be closer than twenty feet. But again, permits were issued for those to be less than twenty feet because of that error that was in the ordinance that went to city council. And so this last bullet is one that I would point out, staff is recommending against this variance, but one of the concerns that we've heard from neighbors is the potential concern of two-story houses. So if you're inclined to grant this variance, we would recommend placing a condition on it that if you allow homes to be built closer to the property line, you also limit them to one story instead of allowing the two-story home. So basically, this is all of the things I just said, so I won't read through that again. But staff is, has found that, we don't believe there is a hardship on the properties that would warrant a variance from that twenty-foot standard, although there are some unique circumstances in this one, as I mentioned. But again, if you are inclined to approve it, we would recommend limiting it to a single story to address those neighbor concerns, because it's one thing to have a two-story house twenty feet from you if you're the next house behind, but to have that house only ten feet from the property line and two-story would be problematic.
John, could you please go back to the plat? Please? Have the subdivision there, okay.
Right there, or that one, which one's better?
Yeah, uh, well, let's go to the other one. That's even better. My screen wouldn't.
That's all I had, if you have any questions for me.
And how big is that picture? Okay, the, the stars are the ones in question?
Those, those are the ones in opposition.
Oh, opposition, okay.
The red, the red ones are the ones, the subject properties, those five.
Okay.
And then the red stars are the property owners who responded in opposition.
So that's five lots, these are back, lots back up to each other. What's the zoning on the, on the, are those single-family residents there, you know, twenty-five foot setback, thirty-five?
Yeah, most of the neighboring lots are RS-one zoning. There is this, it's kind of hard to show that, but kind of that strip of homes there is within that planned development. But as I mentioned, the planned development did not reduce the rear setbacks, but it did adjust some of the front setbacks and side setbacks.
When was that plat approved, what year?
That's a good question. I'm sure the applicant may, may recall. It's a fairly new plat, though.
Is it? On that twenty-foot, instead of the ten, and it was never brought up except at planning? Is that what you said?
Well, that wouldn't have been shown on the plat, I don't believe. But the, the planned development ordinance did have that typo that had ten feet instead of twenty feet, which it should have been, which resulted in the permits being issued in error.
Which resulted in a lot of confusion.
So did they already start?
Yes, yeah, and that's, that's why I showed that graphic.
Would you have been against that?
Against.
At that time? Now we're looking back, huh?
Well, yeah, I mean, as I mentioned, the, the issue of a rear setback was brought up at the planning commission meeting, and I think everybody's desire was to have it stay at the twenty-foot setback. So we, at the time, we wouldn't have supported ten feet in the back.
You would not have?
No.
Fifteen?
No, again, that was discussed at the planning commission, and that, because they were, they were allowed more at the front, because the front setback was reduced, that's less of a reason to allow more in the back.
I just didn't know the rules on planned unit developments, whether they had more leeway to...
No, a planned development can have more leeway. That's one of the purposes, to have reduced setbacks in different variations. But it does need to be approved through that planned development process.
So they presented it with ten-foot setback as a planned unit development, and then they would have had to do the battle to get that approved. You wouldn't have said, you wouldn't have been for it, the staff wouldn't have been for it.
That's right.
Hindsight, hindsight stuff here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright. And again, had, had they come forward with permits, and we had recognized the error, we would have denied the permits, no problem, everybody's happy, well, for the most part. In this case, the unfortunate thing is, because of that typo, our staff looked at it and said, oh yeah, it says right there, ten feet setbacks. So we issued the permits allowing those homes to be closer to the property line.
So, I don't know if you call restrictions a non-plan, so the restrictions were drawn up with ten-foot on there. The typo was theirs, not y'all's.
No. It was the city of Cincinnati. The city made a mistake, and they granted the permits.
Just clearing, clearing.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, alright. Any questions from John?
So when you're saying you're recommending denying it, what are you asking that they do?
Well, since, since the homes haven't, basically haven't gone vertical, they've just done site work and maybe some foundation work, they could redesign the homes to meet the twenty-foot setback.
So on this, the PD is number twenty-three oh four, so it is two thousand twenty-three.
Yeah, the planned development was done just this year.
Brand new.
Right.
John, the other, the other lots in blue on, on either side or across the street, are, are they variance for other than twenty?
No.
Are they built, or are they just lots?
No, I think you can see the ones, the, the ones that have the little yellow boxes, those are the ones that have been built, so.
Oh, okay.
So the people that are in opposition, yes. So the people who have the... So if we make the changes, who is required to pay for those changes?
I'm sorry, who's required to?
Pay for it.
Well, that, that's probably a question outside this meeting. I think ultimately, responsibility is the property owner to, to fix that. I, I won't get into the legal issues, and maybe Brandon would want to jump in, but yeah.
So we can't discuss money in these meetings, correct?
As far as like, what it would cost for them to redo the, I mean, the applicant can certainly present that. I don't think the board should necessarily consider that in the decision.
Right, that's what I, that's what I mean.
Yeah. But I will say, if the builder feels because of the city mistake that there's a claim against the city, I mean, there is a process for them to file a claim with the risk management department, and to go through that, that process, so.
Remy, do you have a question?
How many are foundations, or out of the number of lots, how much work is to be done? And if it was set back to twenty, would it restrict the, you know, the minimum square footage that's been built out there? I'm assuming not, but...
It wouldn't affect the amount of square footage. The maximum square footage would be the same either way. I, I think, obviously, one thing the builder could do, if, if you say he can't build within that twenty feet, to get the square footage they want, they might have to go vertical to a two-story house to get the same amount of square footage. I think that is perhaps one of the concerns of neighbors, so it's kind of a catch-22. So this list shows you, there's only one, fifty-three thirteen, where the slab, the concrete foundation has actually been poured. Two more, fifty-three seventeen and fifty-three twenty-five, they've been formed up and the plumbing laid, but the concrete hasn't been poured. And then the other two, twenty-one and twenty-nine, the, the Calici pad has been, has been placed. Again, the builder can probably give you more details about that, but only one foundation's been poured.
And the foundation that's poured, is it within ten feet?
I'm sorry.
The foundation at fifty-three thirteen, is it within ten feet of the back property line?
Yes, I believe so.
Right on it, huh?
Okay. Oh, went too far. Fifty-three thirteen is about ten feet, two inches.
Wow.
Can you go back to the house that's already built on that street, please?
Um, let me see, is there a picture?
Yeah. Oh, wrong way, sorry. It's not completed, but it's got, it's framed. That house, do we know how far back that one is?
The house that's actually going up?
Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure, the builder may be able to answer that question. I will say, there is one house, these are five lots, he actually got permits for six lots. One of those met the twenty-foot setback, so it was allowed to move forward at the time. And so that's why they're only asking for five of the six lots for a variance.
Go back to the porch slab again, please, John.
This way?
Yeah. Is that straight back? Is it an offset? Is that a two-story or a one-story?
I believe it's a one-story, but again, the builder can probably answer that better than I can.
Any more questions from John?
I'm, I'm trying to figure out the, the two-story thing here. If, none, none of these are, are late, are designed for a two-story currently?
I don't believe so, but again, the builder probably can better answer that.
Yeah, let's, let's...
I believe they're all one-story, though.
Understand. I'm just trying to figure out what the two-story thing, in the presentation, the, the neighbors were upset about a two-story home, but nobody said anything about a two-story home in those lots.
I think their main concern was if they built a two-story home, the view or anything like that. So he was asking, is if, as a board, we decided to approve it, if we would put restrictions on making it just be approved with, with just a one-story and not approving it?
Okay.
Or restrictions with no two stories allowed?
That's right.
Correct?
Yes. Okay.
That was his recommendation, if we did approve it.
Any more questions from John?
I have one more, sorry. Just to confirm that the rest of the, the blue area, there are zero other ordinances for, they're all twenty-foot, correct?
Yes, they're all twenty, yeah, that's right.
Some of these are part of that same PD, but the twenty-foot would still apply, because that ordinance did go to the council this last meeting to get corrected. So that typo is corrected because of these other lots going forward. If anyone pulls anything, I mean, they're going to be able to see it's twenty-foot.
So just those five lots in the middle would be the only ones that have a five-foot setback?
Right, if the variance is granted, yes.
But everybody has already, with the regular twenty-five?
But most of those houses have not developed, so they could always come and ask you for the same variance. That has not happened, and we don't know that it would, but...
Yeah.
More questions? Thanks, John. Public comment. Y'all line up, and after this gentleman's through, step right on up to the comment section, and we'll get her going.
Zane Willard, I'm the lucky builder dealing with this debacle, so...
Welcome.
Uh, there's a lot to drill back into here, but first, I'd like to tell you a little story. Has anybody, everybody raise your hand if you've ever had a speeding ticket? Come on, be honest.
Sorry?
Have you ever had a speeding ticket?
Yeah.
Oh, no. Okay, you're the lucky one. So imagine driving down Knickerbock, and the speed limit's forty-five.
I just walk the walk, talk the talk, and after this, I'm going to church, you know?
So imagine being, driving forty-five miles an hour, and you get pulled over right by the speed limit sign. And the police officer walks up to you and says, sir, you, you know you were speeding, how fast were they going? You were going forty-five. Sign says forty-five. Well, there was a Scrivener's error, and it was supposed to be thirty-five, but we went ahead and posted them. It's kind of what this thing has felt like. And so I'm here with the solution, and the reason that we even asked for variance was because we were told that y'all would support this. And so we wouldn't even ask for variance if we wouldn't have been told by Brandon Dyson that they would support it, there was strong support for it. That being said, I think the, the main point to point out in this, that we asked for a permit, there was three people that we went to to find out what the setbacks would be whenever we started drawing the plans. We go to our title policy, which was issued by VIP Title. What they got was also gotten from the city, which was incorrect. So that was presented to us, we got that. Secondly, we went to Bentwood, we got the plat sent to us. It did not have the rear setback on there. So then in turn, we had to go to the city. We do this all the time, so the city gave us...
Can I interrupt your second, Zane?
Yes, sir.
I think the, the deal here, and I'll, I'll let you continue, but I really think the deal, let me just kind of cut to the chase, is the neighbors having concerns about two stories on these lots going up behind them? Or all, the rest, what you got permitted there, are they single-story or two?
Five, well, four single-story, one's two-story. And I don't think they're concerned about the ones that we've got currently drawn up.
Okay, which one's a two-story?
Fifty-three twenty-nine.
Fifty-three twenty-nine, okay. Okay, but the rest of them are single-story?
I don't think the concern is even on that one being a two-story. The one that's the biggest concern is fifty-three thirteen, that's the one that the slab has already been poured.
Yeah, of course.
It, it was set up based upon what the ordinance on the day that we got issued the permit was, which was ten-foot. It was all within compliance. So we poured it the day after we poured, is when we were notified that we were incorrect. I've come up with two solutions to fix the problem. The first would be to... Do you have that clipper?
Yeah.
Take it to fifty-three thirteen.
The site plan, okay?
Uh, right there.
That one?
No.
That's thirteen.
That's fifty-three thirteen.
Okay.
Yeah, there was an offset there, I didn't notice.
Yeah, so that's a porch right there. So if you go back to right there, if you go to the, the top side, that sixteen-foot, five-and-a-half inches. If we make that house come straight across at the sixteen-five, and we delete all of that right there, that all becomes porch, we don't cover it. That corner, the lower corner right there that reads ten-foot-two, that now is currently on the plans drawn as bedroom four and a bathroom. We delete the bathroom and the bedroom, make that the porch. We could make the structure end at sixteen-foot, five-and-a-half inches and keep it single-story. That would be my proposal for that one.
Okay.
The next one...
Is that the pitch of the roof, six-twelve, I suppose?
Uh, six or seven, and it's hipped in the back, so you just see the hip of the...
Okay, so.
I've got a, if I can pass these around to you.
Is everything out there high pitched?
Yes, sir.
Six-twelve, roughly?
Yeah, they'll be six or better.
Yeah.
So in that scenario, we go from ten-foot, ten-three, to sixteen-five-and-a-half on fifty-three thirteen, leaves us three-foot, six-and-a-half inches short of the required twenty-foot. On fifty-three seventeen, we would have to remove the plumbing, which, we'll do that, we'll suck it up five-foot forward. We can't really move the fifty-three thirteen, we're stuck, I mean, it's just got a slab there. But if we pull that one up five-foot, we go from ten-foot-five to fifteen-five for the rear. On fifty-three twenty-one, we're currently at eleven-foot-three. If we pull it up five, it gets us to twenty-one-foot, five-and-a-half inches, so we're within the twenty-foot, we could, it solves the problem on it. On fifty-three twenty-five, we're currently at thirteen-foot, five-inch. If we pull it up five, we get to seventeen-eight on one corner and eighteen-five on the other. That lot kind of makes a little, little turn right there. So it gets us basically two foot from being within the, the twenty. And on fifty-three twenty-nine, we got a fourteen-four and a seventeen-three corner, it gets us to nineteen-foot-four and twenty-two-foot-three-inch.
Okay.
So one corner, we're six inches short.
You've done your homework, haven't you?
So the only two that are, I mean, we're getting very close, even on the first two, we're, we're, we're one yard away. The second one's the one that we're four-and-a-half foot away. That doesn't require us to redraw the plans, all we've got to do is jank up some forms, pull them forward, and it gets us very close to being within that twenty-foot that was changed when we started all this process.
Have you discussed this with the people that are opposing this yet, or is this the first time they heard it?
I'm a big believer in communication, very big believer, and we have tried.
Mm-hmm.
I, I don't think that, no, Zane, your question. Other than the city, and that's the reason we submitted this, and, you know, we were to be...
So this is the first time they've heard it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I don't know how many's here in opposition, I'm sure there's a lot of people still in the audience, we're on the last agenda item, I'm sure there's, we'll see.
The, the minutes reflect from the meeting and the planning commission, because this was actually two different planning commission meetings, the one in February and the one in March. And there was definitely some discussion, one of them was about a fifteen-foot setback. It's kind of where we got to this point. You know, the, the most crucial to all of us is that fifty-three thirteen. And, any questions?
Uh, let's see here, any questions? Yes?
Sure?
No.
Jill?
Good.
None? Well, I'll say, you've, you've worked on your floor plans to do that. Jill?
Good.
None? Well, I'll say you've worked on your floor plans to do that. I mean, that's going, that's going the extra mile for the stuff you've got in, already in. And for, I know the mistake that was made. I mean, you've done your due diligence and.
Well, our intent was never to upset anybody. We were just there to build a house and do our job. And I hate that it's caused any ill will. I kind of feel like I've become a villain in this deal with just trying to build a house and.
Sounds like you're trying to cooperate and help, help anyway, whether it's.
I did learn one thing out of all this.
What's that?
The definition of a Scribner's error.
The definition of what?
A Scribner's error.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that was a new one to me, so.
Gives them a lot out, doesn't it? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right. Hey, look at the audience. How many is going to have public comment on this? Raise your hand. Okay, just get on the front row and I'll try to keep up with you.
Scott Allison, I'm his partner. One thing they said, he said, this doesn't cause any undue hardship. And the money was brought up and didn't get answered. I asked Zane, what's the hardship going to be? It's $120,000.
You know what now?
The hardship, if nothing, if everything's just, there's no agreement, there's no working together, it's just you're going to do it this way and go to hell, boom. It's $120,000. Either I'm going to eat it and Zane's going to eat it or the city's going to eat it. I'd rather none of that happen. That's why Zane's just spent so much time, if we can massage it.
Sure.
And make it work. And I sure don't want two-story houses, because those are my neighbors too. I wouldn't want a two-story house looking in my backyard.
Right.
And I understand that. So our, my only plea is what I do for a living, we don't want a fight. Let's make it better, if there's a way to make it work. We can say their fault, I don't want to put any figures whose fault who's ever based a blame, so Bill, let's just see if we can fix it.
Any questions? Thanks, Scott. Next, public comment?
Your name?
Take your name.
My name is Kevin Collins, I'm the, from Bentwood Estates.
Kevin who?
And I've got just several points I'd like to make. First of all, going back to the, the planning commission meetings, when we originally filed for the plan development in February, there was much concern about RS3 versus RS1 zoning based upon, because zero lot line homes were actually lumped in with RS3 zoning, not RS1. So after, you know, working with the community and the homeowners that came to that meeting with concerns, we pulled the PD, went back in March with a PD that had an RS1 underlying zoning. The only adjustments to the PD were, as Mr. James was discussing, we went to the zero lot line, we increased the ratio, and we moved the front setback forward to a 20-foot setback. And there was much discussion in that planning commission meeting, including from, from the residents regarding what was the rear setback going to be. And it was even asked by a resident, can this change? And that resident was affirmed that no, that this cannot change. It will be a 20-foot rear setback, it is RS1 underlying zoning. In fact, quite honestly, from the time we filed the first plat was RS1 zoning. It has never changed from the entire time that we've been, had the plat filed. So there was never any question about whether 20-foot setback was going to change, not because it was already there. It was not asked to be changed, it was already in place. And even though there was a Scribner's error on the exhibit, if you read the actual ordinance that was sent to city council, it clearly states an underlying zoning of RS1, which means a 20-foot rear setback. So there was never any real discussion other than there was one point in the planning commission where they thought about saying, well, can we move them back to 15 feet and leave the 25 front? And there was much discussion about maintaining the backyards, so they wanted a 20-foot front so that we could have a 20-foot back. So that's the, the main reason I'm here is because when we filed this planning, our PD, there was much discussion amongst our owners in the, in the, in the neighborhood. So we wanted to make sure that we made our promise and kept it. I mean, I stood in front of the planning commission. It was asked to the planning department staff, it was asked to the planning commission people. Everybody agreed it was a 20-foot rear setback, and that is on a YouTube video if you'd like to look at it, okay? I understand the situation relative to the error that was made, but I think it's important to look at this as two separate issues. Yes, there was an error made, but in reality, the 20-foot setback was never changed. The other thing, the next thing about this is, is if, if, you know, you're looking at the burden, okay? If we grant this variance, then you just distribute that burden to the, to the homeowners that are backing up to the back of those houses. And those are extremely nice homes, $700,000 homes backing up to that, the houses that are under, in the variance. And so you say, okay, well, it's $120,000 and I agree with Scott, it's a bad deal. This is a bad deal across the board. It was, it was simply a mistake that was made. But you take that $120,000 and you just distribute it to the five homeowners that now have to have a house that's closer to them than every other person in Bentwood. So yes, if maybe, if Mr. Holland's house comes up for sale and there's a house that's 10 or 15 feet from the rear, is his house going to be as valuable as the house that's followed the rules and had the 20-foot setback? There's no question that it will affect his property value. There are declarations in place that were put in place in August of 2022 that asked for plan review from, from the architectural committee from Bentwood Estates prior to construction being commenced. That did not happen. There is, you know, there's still possibility that we could have made a mistake and allowed them to do that. But there was an option and an opportunity to keep, to potentially have this not occur. If the plans had been submitted prior to getting a permit as are outlined in the declarations, then this would have been argued over in my office as opposed to in front of everybody as to whether there was an option for a 20-foot rear setback or not. In Bentwood, I've been there 25 years, we've never allowed anything closer than a 20-foot rear setback. It's RS1 zoning. It's part of the process. It does dramatically change. If you go to 10 feet, it does dramatically change. And it's unfortunate because honestly, we're all in the same game. We want everything to work out, but you have to kind of separate the two and say, okay, there's a 25-year history of, of the RS1 zoning and we've got five lots here that we've got a problem with. Regardless of whether you can find it to 15 or 14 or 16, there's still going to be a difference placed on that. And when you look at the zoning board of adjustments role in a variance, you have to find, there's six things you have to find that actually, you know, part of your criteria. Well, the way I look at it, there's about four or five of these that don't even come close because you are going to affect the other property owners if you make this decision. I think the other thing that's overwhelming is that if, if in fact there is an opportunity to go to the city and utilize the risk management, if you allow a variance right now, then that option goes away. Because now you've allowed it to happen. And so now these homeowners who were promised in a public forum a 20-foot rear setback are now going to have the burden of that not happening. So in reality, if you grant the variance, it gives the, the city somewhat of a get out of jail free card because now no one can go back and say, oh, well, wait a second, this is affecting my property value. Because the zoning board of adjustments doesn't have any option past this. So it's just, it's imperative that, that I think that we understand that, you know, it is a bad situation and we do feel bad about it, but there was potential for it to not happen. And there is an option for restitution, maybe, or maybe not. But is it, is it the right thing to do to change the rear setback for these five lots and just redistribute the burden to the five owners that are behind it? And in our view, that is, that is not the case.
All right. And now, when you, when you say it as an absolute that it affects market value, do you have an appraiser that's here that's going to talk about that?
No, I don't have an appraiser, but a common sense would tell you that.
Well, no, common sense does not tell me.
Okay, that's fine.
That's not, that's not objective.
Perfect.
It's subjective, what you're given was a subjective opinion of whether it would or not.
Yeah, I just feel like that.
And okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
If you had an appraiser, because it's kind of turning in all this, that would come up and say, yes, it will X amount and all that. Evidently something's come up for this $120,000 to come into play.
I believe that that's coming from them, not us.
Okay, and you, this, you had not seen Mr. Willard's proposal to fix things?
Actually, he's, he's submitted plans to our architectural committee on two different occasions, and we have denied those plans based upon the fact that A, they do not meet the 20-foot rear setback, which is what is in our declarations. And B, he submitted plans asking for a second-story house looking over, which we denied as well, simply because we do not approve back, second stories looking over into people's backyards. So there is an option to apply for architectural approval through the declarations that were put in place in August. We also did submit an email to Mr. Allison reminding him to put his plans in on, on July the 25th because we saw them starting to work on the lots. So that is in place. It's unfortunate that it happened. Could my staff have missed it? Sure, but it would have been one more thing in place that would have been involved, that would have said, hey, no, this is not the way it's, it's supposed to be.
So what's your remedy?
I think the best remedy is, is to deny the variance and let Mr. Willard go to the city and say, hey, you shouldn't have issued me a permit in the first place because you were wrong. And it's still, it's, you know, it's been admitted, the city has admitted, hey, we made a mistake. What better way to step forward and get restitution than when they admit the mistake that they made? So what I, I want to make sure that we get clear is that if you, if you deny the variance, they have an option to go back to the city. If you approve the variance, then it just gets distributed amongst the homeowners. And we didn't hire an appraiser. But at the same time, I do feel that there's at least a common sense element to, if one house is way close to the backyard of this house and you're selling the house down the street and it's not, I would buy the house down the street. So.
You would?
Have any other questions I'd like to answer?
No, just have a front seat, we'll probably call you back up. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I wanted to hear all of it, but go ahead. I want to hear the neighbors that are in opposition.
Are there any other properties in the blue across that have started construction?
Yes, there are. We have, I believe, five or six homes that are currently under construction. And all of them have met the 20-foot rear setback. A caveat to that is we did have one of them have me run up the flagpole, if you will, with planning, the option of the two-foot administrative variance to the front setback on their house, so that they could potentially build a little bit bigger home. And then, but planning sent back to us, hey, we don't want to approve even a two-foot fronts variance. You're going to have to go back through planning commission to get that. So it was important enough for the planning group to not approve an administrative option that they do have within the ordinance. They decide, they, they wanted us to go back through planning, so we just, the builder just decided to drop it. So there's been quite a bit, there has been discussion relative to that and, and that's what happened.
Restrictions an 812 minimum pitch or 1212 on the roof?
I believe it's the, I have to look it up. I don't have them with me, I can get it for you. But all of the, all the restrictions go through that process, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. And, and, and one other quick thought is we in Bentwood have, have put in about 95 zero lot line homes since I've been there, not including these. Out of those 95, there are four zero lot line homes that are, have a second story. That doesn't mean that our architectural committee would not approve those if they meet certain requirements, but it shows that there was a pretty much overwhelming element of a zero lot line home being a single-story, at least within the Bentwood subdivision.
And that was written in the restriction?
It's not written into the restrictions. All the, all plans have to go through the architectural committee. It is a policy that we have, but we do have options for someone to do a second story. But in reality, most of the time, they aren't. And they will never be approved if they look over into someone else's backyard.
Okay, fair enough. Any more questions? Yeah? Thank you, Kevin.
Thanks.
What do you have, question? Step right on up. Welcome. You want to sit in this chair?
I hope I'm not here that long.
Take your name, please, sir.
I'm Bill Holland and I have 53, 10 enclave. I have the slab behind my house.
Okay.
The one that, actually, there's, these lots are 60-foot front. Roughly, there might be a foot off, but mine is 115 to 120. So I actually have three affected lots behind me that, that are adjacent to my rear lot line. 20-foot is pretty damn close. 10-foot is real close. I'll be able to hear his alarm go off in the morning with the windows closed, it's so close.
How far, let me interrupt you a second. How far is your house from the back property line? Back of your house, from your back?
The setback?
Yes, sir.
Oh, it's 25 or 30 feet.
25, 30, okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
The, as Kevin said, you know, there's lots of errors that were made. Maybe errors in clerical, maybe errors in judgment. Whatever they are, the property owners who have a lot of money tied up in residences that are already completed shouldn't be the victims in this process. And the city made one of the major errors, it's clerical, okay. Errors are made, I understand that. I suspect the city has an errors and omissions policy that they could file claim against. I don't know what their deductible is, but I'll bet they have a policy that can be filed against. I'm retired right now, but I was in business for a really long time. And when you're in business for a long time, mistakes are made. And when mistakes are made, you fess up to it, you own up to it, and you take responsibility for it. And so that's what needs to be done.
Government works a little different.
Yeah, but we're taxpayers and, and, you know, we pay a lot of taxes.
Have you looked at his new proposal?
I have not seen that one, but.
I'm going to stop this right now. But I will have, I'll go further with more public comment. Since y'all haven't seen what he's proposing, don't you think we all, y'all ought to get together and work this out?
No, sir, I don't.
No? Okay.
I think the 20-foot is very clear, that's plenty close. It's standard in the subdivision. People paid a lot of money for those lots. 5-foot, 10-foot, 15-foot, they might make sense in some subdivisions, but they do not make sense there. And there are several houses that are patio homes built at the other end of Riviera. Two of them are sold, I believe, one of them's occupied. And they are single-story houses, 2,200-plus square feet with two-car garages, and they're not two-story houses. So they can be built as single-level houses with the square footage. And I just feel like that there should be a really good reason to make a variance to the policy and.
I think he stated he's only doing one, two-story? Is that what you understand?
I haven't seen the two-story plan. Some of those lots are bigger.
Yeah.
And I don't know this, what's behind, the five lots in question right now, I think are single-level. And that's not really part of this question, but I'm just saying that 2,200 square feet can be built single-level because they're already being done at the other end of the street. So, you know, I don't want to be made to compromise on something because it can't be done when it can be done. Because it's, they're already, it's already been done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Next, public comment? I thought I saw more hands go up than I expected, yeah.
I just wanted to mention, I'm Mark Goodwin.
Hi, Mark.
Thanks. And I'm not behind there, but I'm the red star where it says enclave. But we've been here quite a few times on trying to change these lots and stuff. And when we bought the lot, we were given a plat, a procedure. We knew what, how we could build a house, what size, how far from the property lines and everything, and we obeyed, abided by them. Something that's not on here that they, you should know, lot 5309, the house that's being constructed, it's 10, it's 10-foot from the property line.
Yeah, I think he's worked up some revisions on 53.
But it's not, it's not in the protest.
Oh, it's not?
No. It's the third.
Why is it in the protest?
I have no idea, but it's already framed up, it's already in construction, it's already on...
Same builder?
So it was jumped ahead of time. My thought is, why were all these started without coming back and getting procedures? Like, down the road, they came and wanted a 20-foot setback instead of a 25-foot setback?
Yeah.
We opposed it, but they went ahead and granted it to them, so then they can do it. And the zero-foot, like Kevin was saying, the zero-foot property. But my concern...
I'm sorry, can you speak into the mic? We're on TV, so, could you, I'm sorry, could you speak into the mic?
The 10-foot, now, that's to the edge of the house. Now you've got the overhang of the house that's hanging farther. You know, I had an opposition before with the zero on the property line and then the 5-foot, because the eve's still getting closer and for fire hazard, jumping from house to house. This right here, he's saying 10-foot something, well, that's to the wall. That's not counting the overhang of the house going, it's even closer to the fence. So, but anyway, 53, 5309 is also 10-foot.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Hi, Chris.
Hi there.
My name's Donnie Jones, I'm a home designer here in San Angelo. Been doing this since 1992. We've done patio homes are normally 10-foot setbacks. We've done them all over South Ridge, all over all bunch of the newer developments. And it's always been a 10-foot setback. Now all of a sudden, it gets changed, and we're trying to, the houses this gentleman just said, they're spider homes, they're down in the cul-de-sac. They've got side entry garages because we're having to maintain a side entry garage. So by coming off of the street, we're having to just push that envelope as far back as we can to get the 20, or 2,000 square foot, I think it is now. It was 2,200. But it got scratched out and said it was okay for these five houses. I'd just like, you know, taking consideration of what Zane's trying to put forth, of trying to mitigate this and pull it forward the best we can. Do we have to go back and redesign them? Hope not, because it's going to take quite a bit of time. Then we have to go back through the whole same permitting process because it won't be stamped to say "Go." So that's my two cents.
Thank you, Donnie.
Thank you.
Quick, hold on, Don. Do any questions for, for Don?
Just for clarification, and Zane may be about to say this, but that 5309, the plans do show it as a 20-foot setback. That's that sixth home I mentioned that was allowed to go forward because it did meet the 20-foot already.
It is 20 feet?
5309 was, it's 20 foot and an inch or something like that. So it definitely meets a 20-foot rear setback. So when we got the stop work order, we got it on all six, and that's when we went back and realized, and that's the smallest of the six. So it does meet the 20-foot rear setback, and that's when we started redesigning to try to get these others to fit and utilize the work that's been done. Just to clarify with Mr. Holland on his, hearing the alarm clock. So side setbacks are five foot, so we're 10-foot on each side. If he's 25-foot from the rear and we're 16-foot, five and a half, we're 41 feet, five and a half inches from house to house, rear to rear. On the side, you're 10-foot. So we're still a significant distance if we bumped it back another three. The only reason we suggested a two-story was to utilize the slab. If we go back to 5313, our preference is not to build two-story houses. It's more expensive, it, the harder to sell. But what we were going to do on that, where you see the 16, five and a half, if we saw cut that and moved up, we only had one drain on the back of the house, we could move it back four foot. That got our sink, we reworked it all, we took a bedroom, we went upstairs, and that got us to where we could utilize that slab. And the only way we could do that, get the 20-foot, was to make it two-story. So I've got clarification I'd like. Are we RS1? Is that the underlying zoning of the planned development? So that is single-family home? That is what we're talking about. They've slid them over to make them zero lot lines, is what they are, but they're actually single-family home. So there's no ordinance within the city about two-story. So one of these was already approved to be a two-story home. We don't want to be two-storying, that's not our preference. We had the one because it got a little courtyard. But our preference is to keep them single-story. That's the reason I came up with this little sheet right here that gets us as close to 20, utilizing the plans and what we've got, using the extra five foot on the front, because that was one of the things that was missed at the beginning was that the front setbacks had been amended from 25 to 20. And so that helped us with a little extra footage on the front.
So in yours, yours is a little different because you do have Bentwood. So you have to get your permit, and you also have to get the architectural committee to... And my microphone's off, sorry. You also have to have the architectural committee permission to do that. So the one that you're talking about, the two-story, have you gone to the architectural committee? Have they approved that?
The first one was denied because it was 10-foot setback. The second one was because of, it was two-story, but it didn't meet the 20-foot. I think the main thing is, there's nothing in the declarations about it, single-family home not being a two-story. One of the houses behind us is actually two-story looking back at us.
So it's the way Kevin was saying was, your windows, that sort of thing, where you're impeding or possibly impeding into someone else's? I guess that's...
One of the houses that backs, that we backed up to is actually a two-story houses with the windows looking back at us. So I mean, the reason we picked these particular lots, which is kind of ironic, was because they already had the rear fences built. Had we gone to the other side of the street, I don't think this would ever have been an issue. But they're eight-foot fences. Also in the declarations, it says you can't have anything other than a six-foot fence in Bentwood. I'm not complaining.
But you're also the planned development.
I just think that there's, you know, kind of ebb and flow. Why we only allow six-foot fences, even as a city ordinance? Eight-foot are better, in my opinion, but I mean, everybody's got an opinion. But I mean, we're not complaining about it. I think that everybody's doing the best they can to give themselves privacy. That's what this is all about. I've worked up what I think is a very workable plan. It gets all of them greater than 15-foot away. I think, could you go back to the plat? So 53, this is behind 13, that particular house is, it's got an eight-foot structure, eight-foot from our property line. We went on Google Earth, they've added a little gazebo. I don't know, I don't know how to, it's almost like a porch. They kind of detached it from the back of the house. I'm not complaining. I just think that there's, every street you go down, there's always a little bit of variance right there. There's eight-foot fences. Declarations say six-foot. We're not complaining, we're just trying to find a workable solution that gets everybody happy. I think we're getting very close on the footages right here. 5313 is obviously the one that's the most pressing, just because of the fact that we've got a slab sitting there and we're trying to move on. I know it kind of goes untalked about, but our goal as a company is always, we like to pour slab a week, we like to keep everybody working. A lot of people depend on us to allow them to go to work every day. Our guys have been sitting at the house. I mean, so the quicker we can resolve this, the 5309 one, we poured after we got the stop work order. They're sheet rocking it today. We have somebody moving in. The goal is December 8th. I mean, we'd already be two-thirds through with these things, and we've been waiting two months just to get to this point, to get a resolution. Any other questions?
Do you have a question?
No. Hi there.
Hi, my name's Julia Antley, and on this plat, there's tenant opposition. I'm 5309 enclave, so there should also be a star. That was submitted Friday via email to the planning address. And in addition to the concerns that you've heard today, fire safety, lack of privacy, noise concerns, I have a concern that this decision was made in February, March of this year, and it has been lost. And this isn't an old decision from the 70s or before we had our records stored electronically. So I just fear that if we override this lost decision, that it could spiral into other concerns in the future. And whoever was the landowner at the time, whether it was the builder or the property owner currently, they should have been alerted to everything that happened in February and March. And so they should have been aware of the decision that was made by the planning commission. And as it's been stated already, there is a pattern of 20-foot setbacks all throughout Bentwood. So I think if anyone drives around the neighborhood, it's clear to see that 10-foot is definitely not the norm. I fear that some of the decisions made today, especially those regarding the carports and kind of passing that down the road, is creating a culture of asking for forgiveness instead of permission. And I don't think that that is what the city council decisions, when they have passed ordinances. I don't think that's what they intended. I do not think that that is what the planning commission intended. And I think that it's a little bit of a lack of respect to the employees that were asking to enforce the ordinances if we're not upholding them.
Thank you. All right, come on in.
My name's Ken Schlout, I'm also with Bentwood Development.
Hello, Ken.
And I'm a builder also. There's something important here to remember is that there are two different or three different levels that somebody has to go through in order to get a permit. Just because the city says a setback can be a certain amount, there are CCRs that govern that at a different standard. So even if you guys approve this at 10 feet, 5 feet, whatever you want to approve it at, we're not. Our standard is 20 feet. We've got a fiduciary responsibility to five or 600 homeowners out there. And, you know, yes, it's unfortunate this happened. We've got two different issues. One is, we need to get this settled and go by the guidelines as they are. The second is restitution. That's a different issue. I'm sorry, I'm a builder. There's a process we go through. You choose to go down a certain path and not, the process is defined, you bear the risk. That's part of business. He chose not to bring us CCRs, I'm sorry, he chose not to bring us plans so that we, as a committee, could review them. If he'd have done that, which he first said he didn't know about that, he did. He submitted plans to us before. So he chose to go around that process. So we cannot, we made a commitment to the people that have bought lots from us, to the Hollands, to the people who have built behind these houses. We've made a commitment to them that we will withhold a certain standard. That's how we built that whole subdivision. And that's what keeps the value as a community. So hope you keep that in mind and don't just, you know, say, "Well, we can modify plans." Yes, we will work with them, we will try to come up with a different solution.
You will?
That's not y'all's problem.
No, no, but I haven't seen a solution, so...
Well, we got it late Friday night.
Yeah.
So, no, as a committee, we have not reviewed it.
Okay.
We will work with it.
It sounds like it's turned adversarial, but, so probably doing it good.
I've said enough.
Yeah, that's good. Anybody else? So I guess what I'm hearing is, from the opposition, is they want him to tear everything up that he's got down on the ground and redo it back to the 20-foot. Is that what I'm hearing? No compromises whatsoever, except through the courts. What, Ken, could you step back up for a second? What, you, the, seems to me, the point is 20 feet. That's it, no more, no less. And so when you say that, I'm sitting there thinking 20 feet, no more, no less, and then you just said not with what's been presented. What would be presented that would satisfy you? The 20 feet?
Well, stay within the 20 feet.
Okay.
Go to, we may allow two stories if there are no windows overlooked in the back.
Yeah, he's going to have, he's going to have parallel stuff out.
Well, and the second set of plans that he submitted, that he went two stories, one thing they failed to admit, say, is that the second story had a garage door opening up into the neighbor's backyard. So that's the kind of compromise we've been dealing with.
This has already been built, or this was the...
No, no, that was, that was the first suggestion.
Okay, they took it to y'all and y'all saw it and said no?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Now, so if we get real with suggestions, yes, because you can build two, we're not going to say 100% no two stories. Because there are instances where we've had two stories. But if there's two stories and they're looking directly into somebody's backyard, we're probably going to say no.
Okay, so you're going to say no.
You've got other sides, but, I mean, readjust the windows, readjust something. You know, because there are compromises, yes, but there are certain standards that we have to keep. Otherwise, I've got, now I've got two or three people mad at me. If I allow something like that, I've got four or 500 mad at me. So, so, you know, when you get into fiduciary responsibilities, you've got to keep certain standards.
Let me ask you a question, how's four or 500, that's the population out in Bentwood or something?
Yes, every other homeowner that's under the, under the CCR is a Bentwood.
Okay, okay. I'm with you.
Because, I mean, yes.
Yeah, well, there's been mistakes made out there that's come across this board too. But anyway...
Well, just to clarify, on...
I mean, y'all, there's nothing to say. That y'all have no solution, basically, for it?
We're not in the solution business.
No, no, but that's why we're here.
Well, he needs to come up with a solution. He knows what our criteria are. So he needs to come up with a solution that meet that criteria.
The 20-foot, a no-two-story looking over somebody's backyard.
That's correct. That's the easiest, that's the easiest solution. And honestly, might be the only one. I'm not going to say it is, because, I mean, he could come up with a thousand different solutions. He may think of something, we haven't. But we have to, we have to consider those people behind them.
Sure. It's a consideration.
So just to clarify, 5313 is the only slab that's been poured, correct?
I believe so.
That's correct.
So 5309 met the 20-foot setback. 5313 is the only slab that would have to be altered. Everything else is clear.
That's right.
Plumbing, plumbing has to be redone on the other ones, Lyndon, because they've, they've staked...
That's right. Some grading work and groundwork and other stuff has been done, but the foundation has not been poured on those others.
But that they're in violation.
All of them are.
Other ones are in violation.
But what I was clarifying is that not, there hasn't been foundation and frame poured on every single one of those that would have to be removed. There's only been foundation poured on 5313.
That's correct.
He proposed doing a two-story up above that.
I didn't.
No, I mean, Zane.
Yes, that one, that one was the one that they proposed.
That moved it back to...
5310, the resident 5310 came up and spoke against, he just didn't have a star on his name.
Yeah, that moved it back to 16 feet, five and a half. Wow. Three foot short. Okay. Any more questions for the gentleman? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm here for compromise. So the reason we haven't met, the reason we got this last week, we've requested meetings multiple times. We just can't get the room. They denied us the opportunity, all get together and look across the table and come up with a resolution. That would be my request. So the one that's in reference, the 5313, the only one that's been poured, yes, we drew it with a two-story to get to the 20-foot, because we were losing... If you go back, can you bump it for John? To get, on the upper side, we're at 16 foot, five and a half. We sucked it back four foot to get us to the 20-foot. That deleted a bedroom and it made the living room and the kitchen much smaller and dimmer. So in order to find the extra square footage, we went vertical. The problem you get into with a zero lot line is that you lose one side of the house you can't have windows on. So when we went up with it and where we found a place for the stairs, you had to have ingress and egress. So the middle room on the upper floor had a, about, can you, a window up there? So we've gone back and drawn a second version of that same with no window there, but that room doesn't, it couldn't be a bedroom because there's no window in it. It doesn't, so there wouldn't be a window, and it has one window that would face the 5309, the one that's already partially built. But my thinking is that the neighbor, Mr. Holland, would prefer that it be a single-story home. It's less obtrusive for him to be looking out the back of his house. And we got it down to three foot. Instead of 20, we're 16-foot. I mean, that, the others, we're within a foot or two. I mean, I'm trying everywhere in the world to get us to there and to get as close as we can. The only one that's four and a half foot is 5317. And I think this really affects three houses, is what it does, because these are skinnier lots. There's three houses that back up behind these six.
What about the other ones, moving those comply? Is that what you, this is what you put?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Would y'all like to look at this, so y'all can see the inches? Would y'all be open to consideration to letting us table this and y'all go discuss it and come back?
No.
No? Okay.
Well, the problem is, we were two months into this. We, you know, and we've been trying for two months to get a resolution, and this is the first time I've been in the same room with them. I mean, we're just trying to find a resolution to get to this point. As I stated earlier, we wouldn't have even asked for variance if the city wouldn't have said you would have supported it.
Look, that's not true. We met with you, and you had two cases, two of which have been heard today. One, we said we'd recommend approval on, which we did, and you got passed. This one, we said this was your option to seek a variance. We didn't say we'd recommend approval of it.
Worst-case scenario on all five of these, you're within 15-foot. You go from 20, you're current, we started off at 10. It's been changed after we submitted these and got the plans, we went to 20. All of these would be within 15.
My concern is, and because I have family, friends, lots of people we know live out there, my concern is, do we open up a floodgate by allowing everybody else to start trying to put it in there and build those, and not abide by where everybody else had to abide by?
Well, there's three streets in Bentwood currently that have 10-foot rear setbacks.
Which are the townhome ones, right? Or the patio homes?
No, they're the zero lot lines. And that's my question when we started off, are we RS1 or are we zero lot line? And I think, my personal opinion, because I don't... And I think, my personal opinion, because I don't think anybody can really nail this down, what the Scribner's error was, was these became zero lot lines. They, they were originally submitted, the February Planning Commission meeting, asked for zero lot line, that's what they came in and asked for, but it's the way the, the local ordinance is written, that gives you townhomes, zero lot line, some other things. It would have had a 10-foot rear setback, that's what they originally requested, that got shot down. Then it came back as a planned development, which is nothing but a variance. It never, it never was really nailed down, but if you go to the ordinance, if y'all pulled it up, the zero lot line ordinance for the city of San Angelo is a 10-foot rear setback. That is the standard. So I think when they were filling out all the paperwork to submit it to the, to the city council, they considered these zero lot line.
I won't disagree with you that there was maybe a, obviously a technical error that was done, and-
Well, I think what I'm saying, I think that, that a zero lot line, the standard, so if you go to Valley View, Valley View Court, or Bentwood Run, those are all zero lot lines and they have rear foot, 10-foot rear setbacks.
Mr. Willard, uh-
I didn't think so either. I thought they were just putting in 10-foot setbacks.
Got a lot of opposition and it's adversarial and all that, all that stuff, and we're going to vote here in a minute, and I'm not sure we have the votes, I have no idea of either way. But, uh, did you not take your plans to the Architectural Control Committee here?
Not, not before-
Gary, I'm sorry, can you speak in the mic too?
Did you, did you not take the plans to the Bentwood Architect-
No, sir, not until after we had already began construction. That's when, that's when we gave it to them.
Just forgot? Or, well, I mean, what was your reason for that, not doing that?
That, that's as good as any, we forgot, that's, that's a fair thing right there. So we built them on Augusta and Fairway? And we, and we weren't required, so-
I'm sorry?
We, we were not required over there, they never were asked for, so I've learned since then that there's different, yeah, different, I wouldn't have known that, but, you know, that, so that, that's the reason I would, I just didn't, didn't know, because on those that we built, we never, they never asked for them, so, anyway.
Okay. Glad I'm not a builder. Um, any more questions?
No.
Mr. Willard, thank you.
Let me just briefly, uh, quickly say, I think we're arguing about the wrong things here. It's, the job is not to determine who's going to take a loss or how it's going to be worked out. The question is, should this zoning variance be approved? I think there's overwhelming evidence, we all agree that it shouldn't be approved, and all these other questions and deals need to be worked out by somebody else at some other location. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any more public comment? There being none, public comment is closed. All right, here we go. All right, board, start talking. Do talk, make motions, or whatever you want to do.
Again, like I said, I understand that the city maybe made a mistake there, but there are rules put in place- Yep. And everybody else had to abide by those. I, I walk that area every weekend, and I can't stand and do this on 5313, from where the concrete is to where the fence is, I can't.
I mean, there's overwhelming public interest to oppose it.
Right, with the neighbors. So I am going to make a motion to deny this. I'll second.
Does the vote have to be passed unanimously, or six?
Well, you have to have six to approve it.
Six to approve the motion?
Yes.
Can you, discussion, uh, Don?
Six to approve the variance.
Yeah, six to approve the variance. Um, I mean, I guess if the motion to deny fails and then you can't get a motion to approve passed, then it's effectively denied anyways, so.
Don? Let me take one second.
No.
I mean, you said-
I guess the best way to say it is, I support the denial.
Okay. Don't have the votes, folks, I'm, you know, here we are, and it's too bad. Uh, seems to me it's turned adversarial, and we can't handle that here. Uh, mistakes are made, forgotten, this and that, so I guess we'll go for the vote. All in favor of the motion for denial? Say aye.
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 Those opposed? Me, nay. Six one. Thank you.
Do we have to vote again about anything? We don't have to vote on anything else, right?
No.
We got enough to keep voting. We've got enough. Item number 10, public comment. Issues or concerns not on the regular agenda item may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments to the dice, and begin by stating their name and address or single member district number. Please limit all remarks to less than three minutes. Any public comment on item 10?